I think we're ready. I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. This evening, we have Victor Doherty, Director of the Buddhist Center, if you please.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to be here in a heart of service in serving our communities. My name is Victor Doherty, Director of the Temple Buddhist Center, and I'd like to begin with this invocation. We begin by resting in the heart space, feeling the warmth, love, and light emanating from our own hearts and sharing that with the world. And with this invocation, the heart of service. May I become, at all times, both now and forever, a protector for those without protection, a guide for those who have lost their way, a ship for those with oceans to travel, and a bridge for those with rivers to cross, a sanctuary for those in danger, a lamp for those without light, a place of refuge for those without shelter, and may I become, at all times, both now and forever, a servant to all in need. And so it is. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you, Director. That brings us to roll call. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte, Commissioner Withington,
Here.
Commissioner Lawson,
Here.
Commissioner Wagner,
Here.
Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Thompson,
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for to approve this evening's agenda? Commissioner Wagner?
I think you moved to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion or comment? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
Close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner,
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson,
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter,
Yes.
Commissioner Withington,
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson,
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. Next on our agenda are the public comments. Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are six items on the consent agenda this evening. First item is approval of the commission meeting minutes from May 23rd and June 6th. Resolution 2024-188 is approving invoices for the county from June 8th through June 14th. There are a total of 240 invoices in the amount of $295,856.54. Resolution 2024-190 is approving donation of letters to and from Frank James to the James Farm Museum. Resolution 2024-191 approving a capital project encumbrance request and sales agreement for the replacement generator at the Schrader Building with Foley equipment. Resolution 2024-192 is approving the 2024 revocable event license for the 8th Annual Wake the World KC Event at Paradise Point Marina. Resolution 2024-197 is approving a term and supply contract for with DH Pace and Superior Door Service for on-call overhead door service.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Is there any comment or discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner,
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson,
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter,
Yes.
Commissioner Withington,
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson,
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item onto this evening's regular agenda is 2024-193. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-193 is the consideration of a request for waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county heir. The applicant is Nicholas Payne, and I believe the applicant is here.
Thank you. Would the applicant, can I come forward and make any comments?
Then I would appear the applicant is not here.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open it up for discussion then. Does anybody have any questions, having looked at the packet? Any questions or comments? I'm seeing none. Are there any further comments from staff? No? Okay. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. I was going to just make a quick comment and end up a motion. I note, looking through the materials, that in the explanation provided by the applicant, that they thought they had paid their taxes, but had only paid, in this case, he had only paid his spouse's taxes from last year. So I, my read on this is that he made a mistake, but the mistake was one that he made, not one that was made by the, by staff or by anyone's office. So if I have interpreted that correctly, which I believe so, I will go ahead and make a motion for 2024-193, moving to approve 2024-193 with the mark, the box marked denial.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-193 with the bar, box indicated declined. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner,
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson,
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter,
Yes.
Commissioner Withington,
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson,
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Next is 2024-194. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-194 is the consideration of requests for waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county heir. The applicant is Michael Mann, and I do believe the applicant is in the audience.
Mr. Mann, if you'd like to come forward and give us your, give us your side of the story, we appreciate it. Oh, by the way, and for anybody who does come up to speak, make sure the green light is on, on the caller, and then speak, state your name, and then speak into the microphone. There you go. Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Well, I moved to Missouri from Arizona, and Arizona in late January of 2022. And I, I guess, like mid-December of '23, I got the tax bill, and it had the vehicles that I brought with me from Arizona, plus the vehicles that I bought in Missouri. But I couldn't get the Arizona vehicles registered in Missouri because I couldn't get the titles from the lien holder. Lien holder said I'd get it from, I had to get a request from the DMV. The DMV said I had to get it from the lien holder. I went back and forth a couple times. So I traded my camper in for a pickup truck and let the pickup truck that I had get repossessed. And I traded my Harley Davidson motorcycle in, in Missouri. And I couldn't afford to pay the, that big bill and then work it out. So I worked it out as quick as I could. And when I got here, they, they said I needed to prove that I didn't own those vehicles anymore. And they sent me on a goose chase, too. They sent me to the lien holder and the, they said the dealer, the dealer that I traded the camper to. And when I came back with the stuff that they requested, they told me, the lady at the counter said, oh, we can see that you didn't register it in Missouri. We don't need to see that. And so, and then I went to the, to pay on the other side, and the guy gave me the bill with the interest and, or penalty fees. And I said, well, they, they made a mistake over there. And he just, he looked me in the face and said, prove it. And I, I just walked out and went home, paid the bill online. I believe that was on the 3rd of January. So it was, I didn't know how the, the taxes worked here. And nobody would tell me. So I, I don't know how they got the, all that stuff on there if I didn't fill out a, a assessment, sign an assessment. The man I talked to downstairs said that it was impossible for his office to make a mistake. And I, I, it's not impossible when humans are involved. I'm, I'm prone to mistakes. And I'll admit I was late.
Commissioner Lawson, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question for you. So you got the bill December, and then you saw that it was incorrect at that time. Now, we're talking last year's taxes. So when you saw that the bill was incorrect, did you come up in December and talk to our staff to?
No, I didn't. I didn't know. I, I, I put it away and was dealing with it later. I'm, I got,
Okay.
I'm a 100% service-connected disabled with PTSD. I saw it, I got angry. That's the first thing. So I would be counterproductive coming in here in anger and.
Well, I will tell you this. I have found, and talking with people that have been here, I mean, it's all after the fact, but just to let you know, our collector could not be a nicer person and, and more willing to work with everybody. She's just fantastic. All of her staff that I've met or dealt with before I was a commissioner, or people that I've dealt with since that have been to her office, have been most complimentary, that everybody will try to help. I sincerely wish you'd come, you know, mid-December or something like that, even late December, because they could have gotten it kind of squared away for you and got the proper vehicles on there. But waiting at, until after the 1st of the year, the problem we run into as commissioners, and we say this almost every week, by state statute, we cannot relieve those, those penalties off of there. You know, unless there was, there were some different circumstances than we have here, you know?
Well, I'm at the mercy of my disability.
Well, and I appreciate that, believe me. I, I do. My brother had a similar problem. So I appreciate where you're coming from. But, but I've just got to say, they have no way, the collector has no way, the county has no way to know that. And consequently, by law, and I have, can't say that strongly enough, by law, we, we can't do anything about it, unfortunately.
They also couldn't show me the assessment where I, that I signed, saying that I owned all those vehicles.
Now, say that again?
They said I signed an assessment for a motor home, an $80,000 motor home, a $30,000 truck, a $50,000 truck, and a motorcycle.
Wow.
They said I signed an assessment for that. And I asked to see it and say, well, you don't have that.
Well, that's a form they send out to you. I apologize. When do those go out, Diana? Do you remember? March? Okay, they go out March before. So you fill that out and send it in?
I did not fill anything out.
Okay. What, can I ask the assessor a question, please? Do, do you retain a copy of those forms that the, that our people send back in?
Assessor Tracy Baldwin. It was an online assessment. The first year when he got his waiver, he came in, and we do have that signed document. The second year was an online assessment that was done, and there isn't anything on the online assessments just to show that it was completed. Once it's completed in our system, it's done as an online.
Oh, okay.
And there's, the online will not, we don't self-assess. So if there isn't an assessment completed, we don't just carry over vehicles. And in this case, the point of the vehicles being on the bill is a moot point because we did remove those and the bill was corrected. They were just paid late. So he paid on the correct amount. The vehicles in question, we asked him to provide, we don't just take them off an assessment unless they, they show documentation of them being removed. The, the next day, Mr. Mann, I believe, brought in documentation showing it, and we went ahead and removed that. Then the bill gets sent to the collector to be corrected, and he paid on the correct amount for the correct vehicle. So, so the wrong vehicles being on the wrong thing, it, it has nothing to do with this, this matter.
Okay. So that's all cleaned up, and, and what he has been penalized for are just what he has.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I have no more questions.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none. Is there any comment from staff? I see head shakes. No. Okay. Any, any further discussion on the, on the commission's part? If not, Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Commissioner. Sir, I just want to say thank you for your service to our country. You know, I know there are ongoing efforts to provide additional property tax exemptions to folks who have 100% service-connected disability status. I carried that legislation in Jefferson City for several years. And I believe, I don't know if Commissioner Nolte has any insight into that, but I do think additional progress was made on, on that this year. Anyhow, I, I hope to achieve a future in which you receive a significant property tax deduction as a result of the 100% service-connected disability status. What I can tell you on this is, just so you understand, state law, unless we find that there was an error on behalf of the county, and there may well have been some, but you acknowledged that you didn't, you know, that perhaps you paid a couple days late in early January. State law literally prohibits us from, from granting an exemption to the, the penalties and fees with regard to that. So I don't want you to feel like that we don't care or we don't respect your service. I certainly do.
Yeah.
What, I just want you to know, while we're county government, we, we operate underneath state law, and state law in this particular situation just won't allow us to provide the exemption.
I didn't, I didn't go online and fill out any, any kind of assessment or anything. I didn't. The only thing I did was go to the, the, where they told me to go to get, to try to get my vehicles registered. The, I don't know, place in Kansas City for the, the waiver, tax waiver. And a little bit of help when somebody comes into a, a new state. In Kansas, I lived in Kansas, too. I'd pay the bills and I'd, I'd register my vehicle, and they would send me a bill, and I'd pay it. And then they would give them, send me a sticker to put on my license plate. Simple as that. And they never, they never added stuff. And.
Yeah. Well, I certainly can agree that, that we have a, an overly complicated system in this state with regard to how we collect taxes. You know, it should be a one-stop-shop operation, presumably through the, the DMV would make this a lot easier. Some states do have a much more streamlined process than us. And you are, you know, not the first, not the first person who was recently from out of state who, who, you know, came and found the system here to be, you know, overly complicated. So certainly have my sympathy in that regard. But, you know, state law, as Commissioner Lawson mentioned, really restricts our ability to give out exemptions to penalty and interest. And so unless I'm missing something, I, I think there's probably not much we can do for you today. And I am sorry about that.
There's a next level. Who's, who's up?
The, the state. I mean, the state of Missouri. And so, and that's what I'm saying. So that's the state law under which we're operating, unfortunately, today. And then what I mentioned initially is, is a separate initiative, but there's a separate and ongoing initiative at the state level to hopefully someday give you significant property tax breaks on an ongoing basis, not just, you know, this one-time penalty, but on an ongoing basis for folks who have a 100% service-connected disability. And I'm not 100% sure that has been, made it fully through the process yet, but I, I'm under the impression that that is coming soon. So I do think, for what that's worth, that I, I think there's a likelihood that in future years, you're going to receive a significant property tax reduction as a result of the, the service-connected disability. But in terms of what we could do today, I think we're probably pretty hands tied unless my colleagues have another idea.
Commissioner Carpenter is, is correct. The, there are a lot of different areas, and we have, as a commission, approached our delegation to Jeff City, asking for various reforms related to property taxes, and our latitude to be able to do something about them. So far, that, those efforts have not been successful, but I suspect they will be ongoing. So while Commissioner is correct, we are not just going to let it go at that. It doesn't help you today, but we, I think as a group, are very much in favor of changing the laws so that we can, we can more effectively respond to the needs of our, of our citizens like yourself. So I am sorry to, to have to, have to say that, but that's where we're at. Commissioner Wagner?
I'll make a motion in a second, but I just want to be sure that I'm reading all this correctly, as far as the details are concerned. You, you've already heard, first of all, thank you for your service. Appreciate that. I, I, I wish to serve you just as well as you've served all of us. I'm not sure I will accomplish that today, but at least want to try. What I am reading from the tax bill suggests that what we are, and I invite Tracy, or I invite Barbara to correct me on any of this, what we are talking about is $170. Is that correct, that we are?
Yes.
Okay, $170. And as I look at the account summary, what I am seeing is a, a charge for a Harley Davidson motorcycle and a Ford truck. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, that's, that's what I currently have.
Yes, okay. So as I view this, this, this is, this is what you have been asked to pay tax on and where we have our issue today with the penalties and interest. As has been said, and in your own narrative, you mentioned that you paid on January 3rd. What has kicked us to this point is that it came after December 31st. So those three days essentially make all the difference in the world. So I, I just want to verify for what reason you were unable to pay the original amount of $143.30 in principle before that Jan, or really, for what reason that original tax was not paid by December 31st. I don't think I'm quite clear on that difference in time.
I, I didn't know how much I owed, because I had all this other stuff on there. It was like $5,000. And I, I didn't have that money laying around, so.
So, so the issue wasn't resolved until after January? January 1?
Yeah, Jan, I, January 3rd, that's when I, I guess, went over, I, I paid the day I found out what I owed, less the penalty. So I didn't believe I owed that.
Gotcha. Gotcha. And I guess my question for staff is, when did we communicate the final amount that was due? Tracy, if you want to take that?
That was on the 3rd.
Well, I'll, yeah, go ahead and answer it. Sorry.
Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor. I believe in the notes, it showed that Mr. Mann came in on the 2nd, and that's when we asked for documentation, that those vehicles were not in his name anymore. He came back in on the 3rd.
I got you.
And I think shortly after, he had his new bill and paid. I mean, it was within, probably within an hour.
Which then goes back to the question that Commissioner Lawson asked as far as why it took so long. Okay. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Appreciate it. I'll, I'll...
Sure. Are there any questions or comments in addition to what we've already had? In the case, is there a motion? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2024-194 with a box marked denial.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-194 with a box marked declined. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner, Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Carpenter,
Yes.
Commissioner Withington,
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson,
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Sorry. Okay, there we go. In this particular instance, but thank you again for what, you know, for your service. We appreciate that, but we, our hands are a bit tied. Brings us to 2024-189. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-189 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from June 8th to June 14th. There are a total of two invoices totaling $445.60.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2024-189.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-189. Further discussion? Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-189. Further discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner, Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes four in favor, one recusal.
Next item on the agenda is 2024-195. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-195 is approving a memorandum of understanding for maintenance and operation of ballfields at Rocky Hollow Park with the City of Excelsior Springs Parks and Recreation Department. Interim Parks Director Davis is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
John Davis, interim parks director. Since 2013, Clay County and the City of Excelsior Springs Parks Department has memorandum of understanding for use of the Rocky Hollow ballfields. This year, the City of Excelsior asked us if they could begin charging for the ballfield usage. Since 2013, they have not. It's presented some problems for them. Basically, the competitive teams, softball and baseball teams will book the field and use it as a backup and then not show up. And causes discontent with some other groups that drive by and see it not being used. And they'd like to, so they feel that if charging for it, it would help matters because it would also, they charge for their other fields and hopefully encourage people to use other fields if they're charging for everything. We would still, the city would maintain the infield, pick up trash and all that. We would still maintain our part, which would be provide trashcans and liners, maintain the restrooms, roadways and parking lots. And they're looking at a $10 an hour fee for use of those fields. And that could increase with their fee schedule. They would just inform us of when that happens. Questions?
Questions or comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2024-195.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-195. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner, Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Next on our agenda is 2024-196. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-196 is a consideration of approving a reimbursement and service agreement for preliminary engineering services for the Stockdale Road Bridge Replacement Project with Union Pacific Railroad Company and Canadian Pacific. Highway Administrator Griffin is here to provide information about this project.
Please proceed.
Terry Griffin, Highway Administrator. This is a request to approve agreements with the Canadian Pacific and the Union Pacific Railroad for engineering costs that they will incur during the course of the county replacing the bridge on Stockdale Road. The Stockdale Road is located west of Liberty on, on Stockdale Road, obviously. It goes over two sets of railroad tracks. The bridge itself is in poor condition. We have applied to and received a BRO grant from MoDOT for the construction costs. And we've also applied to MoDOT to add the cost of the reimbursements that we'll need to pay to Canadian Pacific and Union Pacific to the cost of this. So we anticipate that we will reimburse for any costs that are incurred. Each of these contracts with the railroads is a not-to-exceed cost. With Union Pacific, the total cost, the maximum cost would be $25,000. And with Canadian Pacific, it will be $30,000, both based on what their actual costs are. We're asking for approval of the contracts to book each of the railroads.
Are there any questions, are there any questions or comments? I'm sorry, were you finished?
I was just going to say, I'll take questions.
Okay. Well, there we go. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Commissioner Wagner, you are recognized.
Thank you. Move to approve 2024-196.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-196. Further discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner, Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And that brings us to the final item on this evening's regular agenda, 2024-180. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-180 is consideration of approving an ARPA stormwater funding and sign a construction proposal for bridge and culvert repair and replacements on the northeast 170, 137th corridor with Decker Construction Services. And Highway Administrator Griffin will talk about that particular project.
Terry Griffin, Highway Administrator. This is the 137th Street corridor. It's just west of A Highway. The three locations that are involved in this project are shown there, circled in red. We'll start and talk about the one in the lower right-hand side and work our way towards the left. So the first project is a curve where the 137th Street and 136th Street meet one another. It's a rather low-lying area. It's flat and the curve there collects stormwater every time it rains. So we have puddles going across the road. The area on the side of the road is marshy, but it goes down to a creek, but it's so flat that it doesn't drain. This project will install a proper culvert underneath the road and add a drainage channel to channel the water down to the creek so that the, the land there next to the roads becomes less marshy. The cost of this part of the project will be $17,000. The next part of the project will replace an undersized box culvert. The current box is seven feet by 18 feet, which is quite small. It will be replaced by a 41-foot-long standard girder bridge. We've, you've seen those, those general plans several times. The box is so small that the water bottlenecks right at the, at the box. And right now, it causes erosion on both the inlet and outlet side of the box. The streambanks are eroded and the stream channel is starting to show signs of damage as well. The new bridge that we put in there will increase hydraulic capacity by about 136%, so it should handle the stormwater without any further difficulty. They will also be doing some channel repairs and streambank repairs as well as armboring the streambank for, to prevent erosion in the future. And the cost of this part of the project will be $450,000. The third and final part of this project is to replace the dangerous low-water crossing that's on 137th Street. This is an area that floods with every rainfall. Water goes across the road, making it impassable or at least dangerous to pass. The crossing will be removed. The roadway will be slightly realigned and the new bridge that, an actual bridge that goes in there will be 133 feet long. And we will also be repairing stormbanks, or streambanks rather, and there's channel to make it safer for passage as well as to prevent erosion in the future. The cost of this project is $1,230,000. The total cost of all three of these locations together is $1,697,000. And I would also add that with Decker Construction and Avine Street and Kim Engineering, they have value engineered this project and for these three locations have saved us close to $1 million in total costs over what the original engineer's estimate was. And so we're asking tonight for your approval of this contract. And if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer those.
Questions or comments, Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. And always glad to hear we can value engineer some dollars back. Just wanted to know, since this is all along the same corridor, will these three projects happen simultaneously, one after the other?
No.
What's kind of the timeframe?
They will have to be consecutive because there are residences between each of the locations and we, so we can't close two places at one time. So they will occur one after the other.
And, and so the sequence of the three will be...
To be determined later. This project probably won't take place until sometime in 2025. So we're still a little ways out. The first project, just the culvert replacement and the drainage channel will take about a week to complete. The changing the box to the bridge will take close to 10 weeks to complete. And then replacing the, the bridge, the low-water crossing into a bridge will take five to six months. So it will be, we'll just work through it when we get there.
But because we have this, presumably we will have this under contract, therefore we will satisfy ARPA's requirements and therefore we're okay.
Yes. It meets ARPA's requirements. And there's also about a 6% contingency included in that since we're a ways out on construction.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
If I could just interject, not all of the funding for this project is coming from ARPA. So we still have some bond proceeds that were allocated to the highway along with some funding there. So we're trying to close out the bonds. And so we felt like that would be a good use of these funds. And then the remaining is part of ARPA funding, which was in the long-term ARPA plan that we brought to the commission early on.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Terry, for, for this. And I know we've got a number of big projects underway and, you know, hopefully the residents of the county are gratified of that. I just have a quick question for you or Ferden or Kavanaugh, whoever wants to take it. But in terms of the, when we go on-call versus when we bid these things out, I, I know we've done several now infrastructure projects, you know, that are up into the seven figures and pretty big projects. And I have noted that, that several of them now in a row have, have utilized on-call, mostly Decker, but have utilized the on-call as opposed to going through the, the bid process. And so I'm just, I'm just asking for, I guess, a little bit of clarity for me or information for me in terms of better understanding thresholds involved there or, or, or things to consider there in terms of how the decision gets made to do on-call versus a bid.
Before choosing on-call firms, we go out to bid and we are on RFQ technically. And we ask for the qualifications that the company has. In this case, the on-call contractors are required to be on the MoDOT list of approved contractor, of pre-approved contractors, which tells us that they have the financial stability to handle projects as well as the technical know-how to build whatever project it is that we're talking about. We have utilized Decker because at the moment they, the county went out to bid several years ago with the on-call contractors. And there were two firms. One of them has since gone bankrupt. And so Decker is the only on-call firm that we have. We did recently find out about a contract with the Johnson County, Kansas, Road and Bridge Department, or Water Department, rather, with Mega KC. And we had one project that we have added Mega KC on that one as, and we anticipate using them on other projects as well going forward. The on-call, of course, using on-call contractors, whether it's consultants or whether it's building contractors, saves the county a lot of time and money in terms of the bidding process that is required to do. But we're still very careful about the, which firms we choose to be on-call.
Makes sense. And is there any, I don't know, I suppose, dollar amount threshold or consideration in terms of the bigger projects?
No. Not for on-call. Now, we do require all of our contractors to meet the county's prevailing wage ordinance. And they have to sign an affidavit saying that they will comply with the state prevailing wage law as well as the county, our county ordinance that specifies prevailing wage. And that would be for any contract that is over $75,000.
Very good. Yeah. So my, my question is, I guess, you know, when, when we've got like a big million, $2 million project, I, I certainly, you're the expert and I take your word that, that doing it on-call can, can save time and money. And so that obviously is a good thing. And, you know, I note that, you know, they're utilizing design-build here and that's going to save us money and that's great too. So my question is just more, when we don't bid out a big expensive project like that though, how, how ultimately can we have that confidence that, that, that we're getting the best possible deal, other than the reputation, you know, you know, of the...
One of the ways that we do is we ask our, the engineer on the project to take a look at it, not doing design-build, not doing any value-added, just what will it cost to do the project. And the engineers, of course, do this type of projects on a regular basis. They have a very good feel for what the contractor is likely to bid on these projects. So we start with that number. And then we ask the contractor and engineer to work together on the design-build or the value-added so that we see how much money, if, if it's possible to save money. Sometimes there's very little, on a small project, there's very little room to move.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes. First of all, you do a great job. You, you always have your stuff all together when you bring this before us. I, I'm always gratified that we give jobs to someone in Clay County. I think it's imperative that we do that. But I'm kind of with Commissioner Carpenter on this. And that is, when, when you say we, we have those preferred contractors, so say we've got two or three of them, that we know do a great job and are always there, give us a decent cut on everything, and they, they do everything properly. But I, I wish we would do a broader range when we do that. I, I don't see why we haven't got the ability to open those bids more, especially, you know, if you're talking about $50,000 on something, let's don't waste our time. But when you're talking over a million and a half, then I do think that that should be opened up broader so we can, we can bring in more contractors in the area. Because, not, not that I agreed with it, but I remember Commissioner Lawson, or Commissioner Carpenter fighting tooth and toenail to make sure we had the, the proper kind of, what do you, fair...
Responsible.
Huh?
Responsible.
No, fair...
The Fair Labor Law, the prevailing wage.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
That we had that all in place and all. So I think we need to open it up wider so we can, that, that's my opinion. I think that we should be more broad with these, especially if we know if it's a, an emergency thing, we've got to get it done because a bridge is closed and we don't have any recourse, then we got to do what we got to do. But when, when we've got time, I think that there should, it should be more inclusive for all the contractors in, in the area and see if we can't get more to participate in just one.
I would add also that as, as we come to the end of the on-call contract, whether it's with a, an engineering consultant or whether it's with a contractor, we open it up, we send out a brand-new bid, we start over and we say, everybody who's interested, let us know whether or not you're interested in being an on-call contractor. And we open it up at that time. So we do that regularly. It's just that right now, we're in the midst of, of that on-call contract. And so you do see Decker Construction fairly frequently.
I'm with you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Now, I can't resist to ask another question. So I, I am a little curious, and I just want to make sure that I'm hearing what I think I'm hearing. So typically, when I hear an on-call contract, you, you are doing it in order to inject someone so that if an emergency arises, that you have someone that you can instantly go to and not have to go through some sort of, some, some sort of process that will take you far further than you needed to when you have kind of an emergency. And I, and I guess what I'm hearing from my colleagues is, and even to my earlier question, well, we're not actually going to do construction until 2025, which suggests that although this, these are very important projects, they're not necessarily emergencies, which may suggest that if people are hungry enough, and granted, I love saving a million dollars, so I did not forget that. But, but I, I guess what, what I'm trying to reconcile, and mind you, I'm going to make a motion to approve this in just a minute. So I'm not, you know, I'm going off the deep end. But I am, I am kind of curious, when the timing in this case is such that it is, are we, when we do an on-call RFP and we do an on-call contract, are we basically saying whatever business we have when it comes to projects and infrastructure like this, that because you are the on-call, you are going to get it? Am I, am I, am I making sense? Am I...
You might think of an on-call contract as a term and supply contract. It's the same principle that with a term and supply contract where we have specific materials that the county is purchasing, we buy from the same contractor or the same company over and over because we know their prices are what they, where they're the low prices and they're the, they provide the quality product that we need. An on-call contractor obviously has larger dollars than what if we were buying paper and pens for the office or, you know, small things. But it's the same principle. We, we value their business, they value our business. We value their expertise. And the trade-off is that we get a better value for the dollars that we spend.
So we will have some level of preferred pricing no matter what the project is?
With, yes, with our on-call contractors, we do.
So, so we would, we, because of that, we, sorry, I'm taking down my rabbit hole, but are we saying then that we believe in all instances, we will get superior pricing out of our on-call provider, therefore we will not put other, other projects out to bid in search of better pricing? provider, therefore, we will not put other projects out to bid in search of better pricing?
Yeah, I understand what you're asking me, and I would also say that it depends on where the funding from the project comes from. There are some projects, like the Stockdale Bridge BRO that we just talked about, we are required, because that is federal funds, we are required to go out to bid for that one. We have no choice about it, so we will go out to bid on that one. But as for the project, the ARPA projects, we're not required to go out to bid, we're just required to follow county purchasing requirements, and county purchasing requirements say that we can hire an on-call contractor or an on-call consultant to do that work.
So I think there is a little bit, the county's practice has been, we call it an on-call, but it's really not. So basically, as Terry mentioned, we go out to bid for construction services, and we vet those companies, and they're our preferred vendors. So in essence, that's what we're doing. We've got preferred engineer firms that we use, we reach out to them and say, we've got this project, who's available, what cost will you give us to do that, and we go with that particular vendor that we have vetted. We do the same thing a little bit with construction. I think what I heard Terry say is, some of our preferred construction vendors have dropped off for various reasons, and so I don't know when the next time is that we need to bid, but certainly if it's the commission's desire that we kind of change how we use our construction companies and even our design companies for larger projects, that we actually bid it each time, we can certainly implement that and make those changes. In this particular case, part of their challenge was, we want to get the construction contract under contract before the end of the year on these projects, because they're ARPA-tied.
Well, and it may just be a matter of terms, because on-call means something different to me than preferred, so, all right, I'll jump out of my rabbit hole, and I'll make a motion to approve 2024-180.
Motion's been made for approval of 2024-180. Further discussion, Commissioner Lawson.
I'll be very brief. How many contractors we have, do we have as preferred contractors right now?
For what type of service?
Well, are they, they're in little categories? For something like this, how many do we have?
Right now, we have two on-call construction contractors.
Two, okay, okay. And then engineering firms?
Engineering firms, there are probably five or six that we've used.
Oh, good, good, good.
That we have on-call, or on-call or preferred, whatever term we want to use there.
Yeah. I personally would love to see that broadened, where we've got more contractors, more people have that opportunity than.
So would we, in all honesty.
Maybe sometimes they just don't, how many times have we put out bids and opened the door to everybody, and we get nobody but maybe one or two people? So, I know, but I know how hungry construction companies seem to be right now, so I'd hope that we could get a broader scope than we have with the two. Anyway, that's all I got.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, Commissioner Wagner will recognize you to close.
I close.
Please call a roll.
Commissioner Wagner, Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
That concludes this evening's regular agenda. Next, our discussion items. First is the Corps addendum for additional agricultural leases, and that is from Parks. So if you'd like to start our discussion, please.
Since 1980, when county leased Smithville Lake property roughly about 3,000 acres, there's been, not all of that land has been developed, you know, for recreational purposes such as the campgrounds, the boat ramps, the lake, and all that. There's been about 734 acres that's been in agricultural leases, from row crops to hay. Since then, the Corps of Engineers has managed all of that property and collected the revenue and spent it in, spent their revenue on the project as they deemed fit. Currently, the county has their own agricultural leases, you know, from the Ferris Farm to Midwest National Air Center, recently the Jesse James Farm and Clay Brook Park and Eastern Parks Maintenance Compound, which is about 383 acres combined. In our lease agreement with the Corps, it states that county, if we deemed that we'd want to, can go out and do agricultural leases within our boundaries of the lease. We've asked them why they've managed the 734 acres for so many years, and basically the response I get, because county didn't want to mess with it back then, so, well, we've drawn, I think we're at the point that we'll mess with it now for the amount of income that we're going to receive. Any income that we do receive, we have to spend on the project itself. We can't use it for administrative purposes, and if we should have anything left over, it would have to go, be turned over to the Corps. I wouldn't foresee that happening with all the projects that we have. The Corps has agreed to turn over those ag leases to us. Some of the conditions that we would, they have right now is that one crop would be harvested per year, either that's hager, corn, or soybeans, whatever the leasie decides to plant. They have a five-year lease, so they rent it out for a straight five years. The only thing we would change, it would be a one-year lease with up to a five-year renewal, such as we do at our current ag leases. And then 5% of the crop has to be left for wildlife. So to get to the 734 acres, it's divided up into seven plots. Currently, the Corps of Engineers profit off of that is about $90,000, a little over $90,000. It'd be a staged takeover. Their leases expire, all of them expire by the year 2027. The first one we would take over would be the end, we would go out for the bid end of this year with the first ag lease, a little over 67 acres, and then so on and so forth for years going on down. They've divided it up into nine, or seven units. This is 96.7 acres. This is in the Crows, the Camp Branch area. This is 90, it's all in row crop. And then they have another two and three area that's 166 acres in Camp Branch that has 115 acres of row crop and 51 acres of hay. Then they have another one of Crows Creek. This would be the first one we take over next year or into this year, we go out for bid, but full control over it, and it's, right now, it's in row crop, 68 acres. Another 114 acres in Crows Creek, 23 acres in the Little Platte Park, which is all hay crop, and another 92 acres in Little Platte that's in row crop. And then another 208 acres that's mixed row crop and hay in Little Platte. And then what we would look at is also further expanding our ag leases. Currently, we have about 77 and a half acres that we have planted in natural prairie grass. It's starting to get a little bit more than we can handle with controlling noxious weeds and locust trees and manpower, so we'd feel it'd be better to put that into ag lease as well and make a little bit more profit to run operations of the lake. Any questions?
Commissioner Wagner. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation, just a couple of questions. So I note on the, what the Corps would allow us to do, we would, so as I understand it, we would be able to offer a one-year lease and then successive five-year leases after that. Did I understand that correctly?
Currently, the Corps on their own, they do a five-year lease, you rent it for five years.
Right.
We would follow what we do now with our current, which is a one-year lease with up to a five-year renewal.
Gotcha. So the first one that goes off at the end of this year, let's see if I understand correctly, we would basically put out an RFP saying, we've got this land available. Our agreement would be based on whatever their bid was, if we, so let's assume whatever the high bidder has, we say we love it, that's fine, we give them a one-year lease, after the one-year lease, we can then give them a five-year lease?
No, we would renew it each year.
Oh, so it's just a year-over-year lease?
Yes, they have the option of renewing it.
Okay, up to five years in total renewals.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, so it's not so much the case with the first one, but others go off in later years. Would we be allowed to, I guess if they're year-over-year, we would not go beyond the current years that we have our agreement with the Corps, correct?
So we would go past the expiration of the Corps lease?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but we could butt up to that if we wanted to. Okay, and then the other question was, if the dollars that are created under these agreements and these rental agreements and leases, we can redirect back into our other property within the, within Smithville Lake, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Commissioner Lawson.
Just one quick question. When we start leasing, putting out the leases, will we retain the type of usage that they have now, be it hay or crop?
Yes, especially like Little Platte Park, that, a lot of that's hay lease, and that's a day-use area, there's frisbee golf there, there's the beach, so we raid on row crops and erosion all from that.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. So are you looking for, yes?
So sidebar, because the Corps has done a five-year contract when they've gone out to bid, and so John's presentation is, when we take each one of them over, we would kind of follow our practice, which is an annual contract up to five renewals maximum. However, I would think that from a county perspective, and these are larger parcels than we've done, that if I'm the bidder, I might give the county a better price if I know that I'm going to get to do this for five years and not have to go through annual renewal process. And so we do have the option, if the commission would be interested in doing that, of when we bid these, to follow the Corps' practice of simply saying, it's a five-year lease. And so we may get similar to the money that the Corps has received before, whereas if I'm bidding it, I would see a bidder could say, well, I'm only going to guarantee that I might get this for a year, who knows what's going to happen next year, you know, the value that they would submit in their bids might be less. So I just throw that out to you and see if the commission would be okay if we kind of change that for these. As we get closer along, John and I will talk about that and see whether we think that might be in the county's best interest, if the commission would be amenable to that.
Yeah, that does make sense. Commissioner Wagner.
Well, I would just say, let's maximize what we can get, and I did find it a little weird that the, as it was presented, it seemed like the Corps would do it one way and we would do it in a different way. So if we can, if we can do five years, I'd say go for it to maximize what we can get. I'm going to assume that someone's going to have to make an investment of some kind, whether it's in equipment or whatever, so if they can amortize that over five years, that makes it a little bit more likely that we'll maximize what we make, so I'm okay with that, just for the record.
And were you looking for consensus on that point from the commission?
I think we have it, so I think we'll proceed.
I think we did, I just wanted to formalize that everybody is good with that? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Next discussion item is highway rebranding, and that is the Highway Department.
As you all know, the Highway Department is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of rural county roads. However, our name frequently confuses residents as well as some of the other people in the county, because our scope of work does not ever include any state or federal highways. It includes only rural county infrastructure, roads, bridges, culverts, and so forth. So in a strategic move, trying to emphasize our core commitment, our core services, the Clay County Highway Department is announcing that our official name is changing to the Clay County Road and Bridge. The decision to rebrand aims to bring about the enhanced clarity and transparency to align our name more closely with the services we provide to county residents. Adopting this new name, Clay County Road and Bridge, underscores our primary focus on managing and maintaining the county's infrastructure, our roadways, our bridges, our vital pieces of transportation. And we have prepared a short video, and I will ask the control room to get that started, if they would, please.
Change on the horizon in Clay County. For years, the Highway Department has been a synonymous city lock to all type. The Highway Department has become Clay County Road and Bridge. Where every bridge connects communities, and every road leads to projects. New positions for leaders, skilled operators are open now. We're not just paving paths, we're paving the way for all who come next. To incentivize the rebrand transportation infrastructure in Clay County. Clay County Road and Bridge, the road to the future, starts with you.
So this rebranding initiative aligns with our department's commitment to enhance our transportation networks and to foster communication, or community, no, let me try again, to foster connectivity for rural residents. It includes some departmental changes, one of which will be that we are advertising to hire a road and bridge director. This person will lead the department into the future and help us further our goal to be excellent, to have excellent care of our roads and bridges and our infrastructure. We also have a strong push right now to find more equipment operators, more field operatives that we can use to help maintain those structures in ways that are, bring us into the future and improve the quality that we have. With our new identity, the Clay County Road and Bridge will emphasize dedication to excellence in road maintenance and infrastructure development. The department will remain steadfast in our mission to prioritize safety, efficiency, and innovation in all of our endeavors. So as Clay County embarks on a new chapter of growth and progress, the rebranding of Clay County Road and Bridge marks a significant milestone, and we believe it is one that will allow us to shape the future landscape of transportation and of infrastructure in Clay County. And I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have about that.
Commissioner Lawson. Whoops, wait a minute.
When we first decided to change the name, do you remember about when that was?
No, it's been a while ago that we talked about it.
And I have to say, I'm ashamed of myself, not very often, but I am here. I did not remember that we ever voted on this, but someone reminded me very forcefully that we did, and so that's a good thing. I don't feel that I probably had my feet wet enough to really be aware, but I'd like to know what, I know we have to change on the trucks, we have to do all that kind of thing. What do you anticipate the cost will be to do all the change?
We don't have a final cost. A lot of the costs that we have will be, like in terms of changing our website, it's hard to say how much that costs to change.
Yeah.
It's hard to say how much it costs for the IT department to change the signatures on our emails. Those are the significant, the forward-facing changes that the public sees. In terms of other things, most of our stationery is electronic, we don't buy paper stationery anymore, so we don't have to change stationery. We just change the heading and print it on the same white paper that we always have. We do have some changes on the trucks, on the equipment that will take place, but we will, most of our equipment right now has a county logo, county seal or county logo on it already, so all we have to do is remove the part that says highway and So all we have to do is remove the part that says Highway and put on Road and Bridge. It should be -- we anticipate minimal costs, and they will -- the costs that we have seen so far easily fit within the budget that we have, our regular budget for the year.
So what we've already budgeted for that, we will stay within. Do you know what the budget amount was for that?
We didn't have a specific line for the rebranding.
Oh, we didn't?
We were just taking it out of our accounts, our general accounts.
I would very much like to know what the cost was, especially since such a big deal was made the other day in the meeting about we need to cut out funding a lot of these charitable organizations and things of that nature. And one of the things I said was, okay, if that's what the commission votes, then that's the way I guess it's going to be, but we better be damn sure that we are very conscious about what we spend the money on. You know, that we're -- we all said, you know, we're going to be fiscally responsible, and sometimes I don't feel we are. So I would love to have a figure on what this is going to cost. I didn't even think about license plates, but license plates and trucks and total cost for changing this. And I, you know, I have to say, I don't see a reason for doing it because I always, whether I was a commissioner or not, I really realized who Clay County Road was, you know, when what their function was, because they were cleaning my road all the time when it was bad. But I would like to know very much what this is going to cost us. We've done it. It could be for the better. I'm not going to badmouth it, but I do want to know what the expense is going to be to get it done all totaled.
We'll put some numbers together for you and have that number for you.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Not a problem.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. First, well, first, as an old marketing guy, I always appreciate good branding, so, you know, I haven't looked at that in a while, so it's very interesting. The two questions I have, or two requests I have, if along with that budget number, if I caught the earlier commentary, we're also looking at some staffing changes and/or reorgs of some kind. So just understanding what that means, you know, if that can come along with the budget piece, that'd be great, just to understand what changes, if any, that means. I'm assuming that there's some sort of eye to the future as far as successions and other things, and that all plays into it, I'm going to assume. But just understanding that, I think, would be great.
If I could. So the commission may recall, actually, I sent you all an email probably several weeks ago talking about the changes, not only the rebranding, but the restructuring of the department. And a lot of it comes from -- Teri has announced her retirement that is coming this fall.
Well, I wasn't fishing for that one, but.
Yeah. Well, you know, we tried to talk her out of it, but, you know, she mentioned how many years she's been here.
Be that way, that's fine.
Certainly well-deserved, and we appreciate everything that she's done over the years. And as we say with any department, when you have an opportunity that you have a vacancy, then look at the department and determine how should it be structured and what do you need?
Right.
And so to Teri's point, we are currently recruiting for a Director of the Road and Bridge Department that will in essence step in. And then when Teri leaves, because as you know, in this year's budget, we approved an engineering position.
Right.
That is still vacant. So we're kind of doing this movement while she's still here and hopefully find that director so we can have that transfer of knowledge. And then when Teri does leave, then her position will become available, and we've talked about what does that position look like?
Yeah.
And what will we fill there? So all of that has been taken into consideration.
I appreciate that and the reminder that, once again, it was already there and I just didn't look at it. But I also think that, to the extent that that is something that, as you launch this and put it out there, that there's some public-facing piece of that that suggests what, you know, these sorts of changes mean, I think there's a value there. The other thing I was just going to mention, you didn't talk about it, but I just have to mention the value of it saying rural, because unlike the eastern part of Clay County, the western part doesn't really see our activity. And I think there's something to that branding that, to help reinforce for anyone in -- who may be coming from any of the cities, east and west, to be able to understand that, okay, there's lots of highways, and there's highways in every city, but there's only one group of road and bridges that we maintain. And so I just want to not underscore that there is a value to pump up that rural part of this, to help explain to our taxpayers, if they see us out there, why they're out there and not in their own community, that, you know, they've got their own municipal, you know, departments that do that. So just want to point that little thing out since no one talked about it. I'm going to talk about it.
Thank you.
But thank you for the hard work. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Lawson.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so right now, what is your title? Pardon me? What is your title?
A Highway Administrator.
Okay. So the new person will be more than just the Highway Administrator. What will Carl do?
Well, that is correct. We are combining both the Highway Administrator and the vacant engineering position that we're recruiting for. So that's where the Director is coming in, is taking both of those roles. But then part of the administrative office that Teri also does is probably the position that we will, you know, change, and that will be what we hire for when she leaves.
Okay, so she'll go away. We hate to see you go. But she will go away, and then this new person will come in that will kind of pick up her duties, but in addition to that, do the engineering portion. And then Carl will remain as he is. Okay? And, all right. And then out there at the Highway Department, how many office workers do you have?
We have two administrative assistants.
Okay. Do they do, like, paying the bills and all of that?
One of them is primarily responsible for anything that deals with finance, paying the bills, grant recording and so forth, as well as safety and training, follow-up and so forth. The other one is primarily responsible for all of our asset management, making sure that we keep track of what we've worked on, what we did, what it cost us to do it, and a variety of reports that go along with that.
Okay, okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments? Further discussion? Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to county administrator comments. Administrator?
Just the announcement that the commission's next meeting is next Thursday, the 27th, at 6:00 o'clock here in the chambers.
Very good. That brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Carpenter, we'll start with you.
Well, I don't have anything important to say, so I shouldn't have. I just wanted to wish a happy full moon summer solstice to everyone. It's tonight. Hope you enjoy the summer that comes next. In the mood. All right, thanks.
Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Withington. Commissioner Lawson.
Yes. As always, I have to give this time, I don't get to talk at home at all.
I am sorry, my thumbs are very fat.
So when I get loose here, I'm just happy. No, tonight, one thing that I really want to do is I want to give a shout-out to Victor Hurlberg. He received his certificate of achievement for five years of continuous service to Clay County. You know, I want to say that he has been a godsend to each of us in his own way. He helped you with your amendments to assist with the businesses, and I -- he did a masterful job at those meetings. I went to all the meetings, and he was a star. He really gave facts and figures, no silliness, just good facts and figures. When we looked at 911, there was a lot of people saying, oh, we don't want to do that, that's unfair, blah, blah, blah. But he really brought it all forward and helped us get that taken care of. He helped with the 190. He gave some fantastic facts and figures. We may not have all agreed with all of them, but he's masterful at what he does. Plus the fact that anytime, and I've seen many of us down there from time to time, you can go to him and ask him a question of any nature. He knows the answer. He doesn't make you feel like a dummy when he gives you the answer. I just think he's such a great asset, so I want to say congratulations on five years, and we hope we have him for many more.
Commissioner Wagner. All right. I'll just make one comment. Last week, we had our graduating class from the Veterans Court. There were three individuals who were able to go through that process. It's one of those things that we periodically come across, so we have graduations from that and some of the other functions that are similar. And I think it's important for us to see just how important that is. The three gentlemen who went through the course, their lives were quantitative and qualitatively changed. They worked very hard, and I think it's something that certainly crossed my mind was, as members of the Army, they were former, all former Army, obviously, just the act of participating in the service displays a good deal of courage, because you are saying basically, I am ready to go when there is danger, when there is trouble. That takes a certain type of courage that not everybody has. In addition to that, they certainly have struggled and they have fought some of their internal problems, inner demons maybe is, I don't think that's too dramatic to say so. And they have displayed an entirely different, but no less admirable, level of courage. And when we are there, the sheriff was there, Judge Alexander was there, the prosecuting attorney was there. A lot of people were there to acknowledge this, and I just wanted to give that one more little mention, because we, as government, do a lot of things, but this is something that genuinely changes lives and changes how our community operates. And I think it is a credit to the county and certainly those who participate in the program directly, all the staff and everyone else, that they are in fact reclaiming lives. And I think there's probably, there are probably fewer higher callings than that. So I certainly want to commend everyone involved, the sheriff, Judge Alexander in particular, and the prosecuting attorney, and everyone else involved, because it is moving to see someone's life actually changed. You don't see that very often. So certainly our appreciation and congratulations to not only the three individuals who went through the program, but to those who put that program on and just grind it out every day and make sure that people's lives are changed for the better. With that, if there is no further comment, we are adjourned. Thank you.